Now, we will call the meeting to order for December 7th, zoning commission regular meeting. The first order of business is to appoint alternates. Mike's not going to be here tonight. We have everybody but Mike, I think. So Melissa, you haven't been in a while. You can serve for Mike if you don't mind.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, the first thing is the minutes of the last meeting of November 16th. There's an updated version that was put up about four o'clock or 3:30 today that fixes a few of the problems. If you've got an earlier one, let's go through. Let me tell you what got fixed in the earlier one that is fixed online. Got two versions here. Now, this is the fixed version. Okay, on lines 109 and 110, we removed those two lines.
What did they say? What was the text?
Mr. Ryan noted the zoning commission did investigate the change in ADU size. Kevin covered that near the end of the minute, so I just said, let's drop that.
Mine, mine 109 and 110 say, Mr. Gray inquired as to the current housing stock.
Then you've got the updated version.
Okay, the only thing I saw is 114 is missing the word B. The third word in should be B, and it's not there at all. This should be addressed. B E.
Correct, I see that.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw, I guess, on the updated version.
You got the updated version.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments, corrections? You have a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Kevin.
Kevin moved.
Ann seconded.
Ann seconded.
No, Ann already had her hand up down there.
Ann, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, carries six, nothing.
Actually, I'm abstaining, Dave, because I wasn't there for that.
Five, nothing. It carries with one abstention, okay. And with that, I believe our star has arrived to discuss the regulations and to let us know about the facts of this, of the sign affecting court decisions.
Yes.
So, can you tell us, we'd like to know what we can and can't do from the standpoint of our old regulations. Mike Clinton has sort of gone through that with us, but I think people are little, still a little bit at loose ends.
Yeah, well, that's not surprising. I think zoning commissions all over the country are at loose ends based on the Reed versus Gilbert decision from 2015. Let me give you, I think it's important to understand the facts of the Gilbert case because they get overblown sometimes.
Dave, can we introduce the guest? Because he's on, is Rebecca? And if anyone was watching this on TV, they would not know who our guest was.
Rebecca's my daughter, and that's a technical, I don't know why my, my phone is named Rebecca, but...
But if we can at least introduce him and who he is, or you do it yourself, Bob.
Yeah, I'm Bob DiCrescenzo from Uptight Kelly and Spellicy. We've been town attorney for quite some time and helping...
I just didn't want people to not know who you were.
No, that's a good point, I'm sorry. Anyway, Reed, Reed was a minister in Gilbert, Arizona, and I'll try to give you the Reader's Digest version, but I think it's important to know the facts here. And Minister Reed, church would travel from location to location on a weekly basis to try to get around Reed, Gilbert, Arizona as much as possible, and they would put up a stop, what we would call a temporary sign, announcing where next week's service was going to be. And Gilbert, Arizona, had a sign regulation for temporary signs, and like most towns, they required a permit for temporary signs. Importantly, they prohibited temporary signs, but they created 23 exceptions to the prohibition. And one of the exceptions was for religious services, provided that the sign was taken up, put up and taken, put up no more than 24 hours before the service and taken down more, no more than 24 hours after the service. And Gilbert had different rules in their regulations for different types of signs. And Mr. Reed challenged that, saying, well, you know, 24 hours is not enough time to give our congregation notice of where next week's service is going to be. The district court dismissed his challenge based on the First Amendment, and the appellate court sustained the dismissal, and he got his, the Supreme Court granted a review, and the Supreme Court reversed the district court because the Gilbert regulation on its face was a content-based regulation. And to put it simply, the court said, if you have to read the sign to determine how the regulation applies to that sign, it is on its face a content-based regulation, and signs are nothing more than a First Amendment means of expression, and anything you put on a sign is a protected speech. And it's just, the only question is what level of protection that particular speech gets, like political speech, religious speech, is afforded the highest level of protection because fundamental rights attach to those types of speech. Commercial speech is an intermediate level of protection. Anyway, the court unanimously struck down the Gilbert sign regulation. It did not say, however, that you can't have sign regulations. It also did not say that the standard way of assessing whether or not governmental action infringes upon free speech, which is to time, place, and manner restrictions based on the content of the speech, applies. You can still have time, manner, and place restrictions on speech in the form of signs, but they have to be content neutral. So what happens to the Simsbury sign regulations? Nothing happens to the Simsbury sign regulations because regulations, if they're properly adopted, are facially valid. And it requires someone to challenge the application of that regulation to their particular sign for someone to have a cause of action to strike down the sign regulation as unconstitutional. However, I recommend, as municipal attorneys all over the country recommend, that the zoning commission review the sign regulations and conform them to Gilbert. Now, how do you do that? Justice Alito was one of the concurring, justice wrote a concurring opinion in the decision, and he actually got very prescriptive about what you can and cannot have in a regulation because there's some concern amongst a number of the members of the court that the Supreme Court did not want to be the national zoning enforcement officer for signs. So Justice Alito tried to say, well, look, we need to give people some guidance here. And I'm going to read you a list of areas of sign regulation that he felt were proper under the Gilbert decision and would stand muster under a constitutional review. Justice Alito said that towns may regulate size of signs, the location of signs, whether a sign is lighted or unlighted, may regulate the placement in public or private property, can distinguish between commercial or private signs, can distinguish between on-premises and off-premises signs, can place limits on the number of signs and distance requirements between signs, can place time restrictions on signs, and I'll get back to that in a minute, and can separate government signs from non-government signs. So what I think this all means is that the regulation has to be facially content neutral. In other words, you can't say political signs can't be placed, but have to be placed no more than 30 days before the election, have to be taken down two days after the election. However, real estate signs can stay up for six months or until it's sold. You can, however, say that temporary signs have to be placed no less than X number of days before the event that, for which it is placed, and have to be taken down no more than X number of days after the event. A political sign, most political signs that say, you know, vote for me, relate to an election, whether it be a primary or a general election. So some limitation on the duration of temporary signs is permissible so long as you don't distinguish between political signs, real estate signs, church fare signs. You know, think of the type of temporary signs that usually go up, and you can say temporary signs in residential districts can be no greater than two by three in size, no more than X number per property, and have to be taken down within the next days of the event for which they're placed. You could have a separate, separate rule for commercial signs. You can have rules for signs that are determined by the speed limit of the road that the property's on, under the theory that you need a bigger sign if the, on I-84 than you do on a local road with a 25 mile an hour speed limit because people are passing by and it's not readable if it's too small. So there's been many attempts since Gilbert to come up with a model sign ordinance, most of them are about 25 pages long. I don't recommend the 25-page sign regulation. I also don't recommend a sign regulation that you need a master's degree in planning to understand. I do recommend that the essential elements of a regulation that will pass muster under Reed be put together, and Mike has drafted one. And what I suggest is, I've got some work, I think, that needs to be done in Mike's draft, but I think we could get something in shape for the commission to look at, at maybe not your next meeting, but the meeting after that. I've spoken too long already, does anybody have any questions?
Listen, Melissa.
So Mike's draft is three pages, Bob.
Bruce, Melissa's going to speak, but she's on mute.
Oh, oh, excuse me. You're on mute.
Sorry, I muted myself when I was already on mute. Hi, Bob. Wanted to ask, if things have to be, if signs have to be content neutral, how does that play in with the greater protection for religious and political speech and things like that? Does that essentially go away because it all has to be content neutral? Or is it that within the realm of political speech that you can't favor one viewpoint over the other?
All signs have to be, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, all signs have to be content neutral. They are presumed to be protected speech.
Within the context of sign regulations, political speech, religious speech, those kinds of things don't have a greater protection anymore under Gilbert v. Reed. They're content neutral.
They do in this respect. If you were to defend a content-based restriction on political signs, you would have a higher standard of review than you would a commercial sign.
So that statute might fail for political speech, but be okay for commercial speech?
Good way to put it.
Okay.
Bruce.
Now, we, we have to get back to, you know, the practical, and we all know a couple of things. One is the regulation of political signs is next to impossible to regulate effectively if it's too restrictive. I mean, you, everyone, not everyone, but a lot of people put up a lawn sign. And the idea, for example, that you would write a regulation that would require a permit for a lawn sign, it just doesn't seem workable to me. So you'd need a regulation that would exempt out lawn signs of a certain size and a certain duration because you just don't have the ability to effectively administer a permit process for, for lawn signs. And if you try to, requiring a permit presumes that you can deny the permit. And, you know, that's not, just not going to work. You can, however, say, you can't have a billboard-sized political sign in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You could have a, whatever the sign, the size of a typical lawn sign is, you could require, call it two foot by three foot, I don't think they're that big, but whatever they are, you can say, within residential districts, all temporary signs are limited to that size, something like that. You just can't have a regulation that requires someone in town hall to read the sign to determine whether or not the size is appropriate.
Or it could be according to the speed limit of...
Yes.
Of the road, okay.
Yes, you can have a different regulation for Hot Meadow Street with a higher speed limit than, you know, an interior cul-de-sac residential street.
Could you do setback requirements for lawn signs?
Yes, you can. And you can prohibit them within the public right of way.
Which is that 15-foot buffer from the center of the road, right?
Well, maybe, you know, it's, it's, that's what you hope it is, but, you know, on some of the older roads, who knows what it is? It could be more, it could be less.
Bruce, you're muted. Bruce, you're muted. Bruce, you're muted.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
You know, the, the thing that Mike first gave us as a thing to look at was a draft that was associated with, I don't know, some town in the state of Washington or on the West Coast, and it was 27, 28 pages. You just mentioned it, Bob, but then what he's drafted for us to look at that he thinks, you know, on extensive reflection, is a three-page document. And so I'm curious now, you've had some time to look at this, and I respect the fact that it needs some work, but is the likely product going to be closer to the three pages than the 25 pages?
No, it's likely to be closer to the 23 pages. But it, it doesn't have to be unreadable. I mean, it can be, it can be straightforward and readable and easy to apply. The EMLA, International Municipal Lawyers Association is EMLA. Their model sign code is a good place to start because they've offered this for the whole country as a, as a Gilbert sanctioned sign regulation. I've made a list of essential sections, and why do I spend a minute going through those? And what needs to be in this regulation to pass muster? The first section has got to be a purpose section, where you recite the major cases, you recite the law, you recite the reason why you're doing it, to protect the public health and safety and to preserve aesthetics. The court has never said you can't have a sign regulation that is based on preservation of aesthetics. Then you need a really good definition sign, a section. You need to define a political sign, a temporary sign, a flag versus a sign, commercial signs, real estate signs. And there's some good stuff in that model regulation on that, so you don't have to start from scratch and reinvent the wheel. Then I think you need to define what a government sign is, you know, street signs, directional signs. And because later on, you're going to exempt all that, and you don't want any confusion over whether or not it's a government sign. And I think it's very important that you define signs on public property and treat it differently than every other sign for this reason, a very important reason. The constitutional rights that apply to signs apply to a property owner's right to post a sign to express his or her political view, or, or not political view, but viewpoint on whatever. It's the property owner who's rights are being protected here, not the person who wants to place the sign. So the town is a property owner, and the town can say, we don't want any signs on our property except the following, subject to approval by town manager, board of selectmen, whomever, so that you don't run into, what we have run into quite often is people saying, well, it's, you know, it's public property, I'm taxpayer, I can post my sign on, on public property, announcing whatever, including political signs. The way it's written in the draft, though, I don't think that zoning commission can designate the town manager as the official who makes the decision. I don't think that's within the zoning commission's purview. I think what the zoning commission can do is no signs are allowed on public property except that are consistent with a regulation published by the board of selectmen, or a set of rules published by the board of selectmen. Board of selectmen should come up with a, a policy on signs on public property. Some you want to allow, you know, that you see every year, the summer youth festival play or something, or the, you know, the town's events. You don't want to prohibit the town from advertising its own events on its own property. And some, in my personal opinion, want to outright prohibit any commercial sign on public property, any political sign on public property. Point being, that's up to the board of selectmen to establish because ultimately, the board of selectmen is in charge of the use of public property.
Bob, if I may?
Yeah.
If I may, as a zoning, as a code compliance officer and zoning enforcement officer, the board of selectmen has kind of put our division in charge of the public areas, the approvals and disapprovals of signage on town property. The mechanisms seem to be in place for enforcement on that. I just want to let the commission know that there is a mechanism for temporary signs on public property in enforcement of signs that don't meet right-of-way and such. That's a light touch, I just wanted to let you know that.
Well, that's, that's, that's good input. So the regulation would say, no sign on public property that isn't consistent with that policy. And then the regulation has to have rules for different types of signs. One of temporary signs, and, you know, a lot of work goes into temporary signs, you know, and one of the more popular temporary signs now is, you know, this new roof being installed by, you know, Acme Roofing. And then you need a section on prohibited signs, just signs that you outright prohibit, such as billboards or whatever. And then a fairly large section on permitted signs, which has to establish rules by district, and whether it's, and by zone. You want a different set of rules for the commercial roads through the town, like 44 and Hot Meadow Street, than you do for the residential neighborhoods. So sign rules by district is permissible under Gilbert. And according to Judge Alito's, Justice Alito's litany of permissible areas of regulation, it's not too difficult to, to fashion regulations that pass muster and are also specific to different districts. And as I mentioned before, you want to have signs that are authorized without zoning approval for government purposes. You don't want to have, I don't think you want to have the town having to come to you to put up street signs and things like that. I think you also want to define flags as, it's up to you, but you, a flag is defined in statute as a device that is emblematic of a governmental institution. And we had an issue in Simsbury where the guy had his flagpole on the front lawn, and he was not getting along with his neighbor, and he said just awful things about his neighbor on a piece of cloth and hung it up on, on the flagpole. And he says, you know, town went in and issued a cease and desist as an illegal sign, and he says, it's not a sign at all, it's a flag. See, it's up there on the flagpole. So you need a definition that says, a flag is a flag and a sign is a sign. And if it doesn't meet the definition of a flag, it's a sign on cloth, and you don't, you can't avoid the sign regulation by putting it up on the flagpole. And then, you know, a section for pre-existing signs. I think many states allow towns to amortize pre-existing rights. Connecticut does not. We, we have pre-existing non-conforming rights in statute which have to be reflected in the sign regulation. And then billboards, type of materials, and illumination are basically the essential elements. Oh, and a severability clause, so if one section of your regulation were to be struck down, all the other sections would remain valid and in place. So that would be, you know, working off Mike's most recent draft, I propose working with him and sort of augmenting the draft with these, what I call essential elements of a good sign regulation, subject to your review, of course.
I was hoping you were going to be closer to the three pages, Bob.
Well, we'll, we will try, we will try.
No, the thing is that I think probably, I don't, I haven't polled the group here, but this isn't an issue that we, I mean, a hill we want to die on. I'd like to just get this over with. What can we do? Let's write it down, and let's start doing it. I mean, it is what it is.
I take your approach, Bruce. Like I said, you shouldn't have to have an advanced degree in planning to be able to read the sign regulation and figure out, you know, what do I have to do to put my yard sale sign up? We should make it customer-friendly. We should recognize reality, like, you know, yard sales is another good example. You're just not going to be able to regulate yard sale signs. People just, they're going to put them up, and they're going to, you know, most people take them down, and, and you're not going to be able to say, you know, you can leave your sign up for candidate Y because we like candidate Y, but you got to take it down for candidate X because we don't like candidate X. That should be self-evident, but sometimes it isn't. And religious, you know, politics and religion, we see the highest level of protected speech, and we need to recognize and reflect that in the sign regulation. And that's pretty much all Gilbert really said. The court said in Gilbert is, you know, you're just not going to get away with saying, you know, you can only leave a church sign up for 48 hours, but a real estate sign can stay up for three months. You know, that, that should be obvious. It should have been obvious to the good people of Gilbert, although they want it to, to lower the court level. But as we've gotten past Gilbert, and it's now five years, there's enough good stuff out there that we should be able to put something together fairly quickly.
So we can still regulate the material used, colors?
Yes.
Plantings around it, lighting?
Yes.
Okay, we can still do all that stuff?
Because it's all content neutral.
Yeah, okay.
If you say it has to be wood, that doesn't impinge upon your, your content, or whatever you want to say.
Right, but when it comes to political, though, I mean, in residential area, you could limit the number of signs or anywhere you can, but I'm assuming that with a political sign, we could not regulate how many political signs you can have in your front yard?
Yes, you can.
You can.
But you just have to limit every, everything to that number of signs, correct?
As long as it's content neutral, as long as it's greater than one. Because, you know, husband and wife may have very different views on who the next candidate, who the next whatever ought to be. And you can't say, well, you can only have one sign, so husband's sign goes up on Monday, and, you know, you can't do that. A lot of the, a lot of the regulations say you can't have any, you can only have one sign every 25 feet across your road frontage, for instance. And something like that would likely be permissible so long as it's applied in a way that doesn't reach into the content of the sign.
Yeah, I'm not sure with political signs, we'd want to go down that path?
So Bob?
You probably don't. You probably want to have the lowest level of regulation as the political signs because we all know the problem it causes, and the problem is enforcement. You're putting your enforcement officials in a very, very difficult spot. And, you know, you always will be open to claim that you're picking on people and supporting one team and not the other, and you just don't want to be there.
So Bob, I just want to make sure I understand the whole content neutral thing. So it would be okay to say, we're going to have a 15, so that signs, commercial signs can be anywhere along your frontage, but political signs have to be within the setback?
I think...
You could, but maybe not so advisable, but you could?
Not advisable, you, you, again, that would require you to read the sign to determine whether it's commercial or political.
Okay, so you can have setbacks, but they have to say, everybody's got to be within that setback?
Everybody's got to be within that setback. Everybody's got to conform to the size limitations. Everybody's got to conform to the materials that we require. For instance, on a temporary sign, it has to be plastic, laminate, no paper, something like that, because the aesthetic considerations can't be within the town right-of-way or the state right-of-way. You know, that sort of... know, that sort of thing.
And can I say from an enforcement standpoint, because I'm the person who's tending to enforce these things, the more consistent you keep things, the easier it is to enforce. So the standards, if they stay along a linear line, makes it easier for us to determine whether they're in violation or not. I hate to be out there with a tape measure and a determination driving by of whether it was of the right material or not. So keeping things kind of consistent is a, it's very good to lift the burden off the enforcement of it. Whether I'm doing it or not, I've done it in several municipalities. And it's just the consistency over the grand scale of things that is important to an enforcement aspect of it. I understand political things get into different precarious issues. And we typically follow the state guidelines and some other guidelines and that. But moving forward with these rulings, Mr. DiCrescenzo has pointed out, I would just, I would prefer just not a litany of different aspects to the enforcement and variety of signs, to try to just keep it in a consistent, linear manner, with just enough staff. That's all I would like to say.
Oh, I think those are good points because, as the commission well knows, you can write any regulation you want, but if you're not careful, if it's not enforceable on a consistent basis, because it's overreaching, or it's too confusing, or it's too complicated, then you're putting in enforcement of people in a very difficult situation. And it looks like selective enforcement, which it won't be, but it looks like that because it's, it's hard to enforce.
But, but, okay, to go back though, to the political signs, because, you know, in a residential area, normally you limit the number of signs, but you don't necessarily want to do that for political signs. So can't, but then you go to, okay, if you make a different rule for political, then it's content based because you got to look at the sign to know whether it's political or not. So.
You know, you may, as a practical solution to that, you may not want to limit the number of temporary signs in residential area because you do, do run into that problem, understanding that no one's going to put up five real estate signs on their front lawn. No one's going to put up five yard sale signs on their front lawn. So as a practical matter, the only time that the number of signs is going to be an issue is during the political season. And I've seen many, many lawns in Simsbury that have, you know, in the main thoroughfares, they might have, you know, eight to ten signs on them. And you just don't want your enforcement people to have to go out there and say, well, you know, pick your favorite two and take down the other six. That's not where you want to be.
All right. So you can regulate it by temporary. You know, you can say, there's unlimited number of temporary signs, but the permanent signs are regulated or are limited. Okay, we could do it that way.
No greater than this size. Setback is, you know, no less than X feet setback from the road of a durable material, whatever you, whatever that is. But most people have that plastic cardboard now for, for most temporary signs, whether it's a contractor sign or a political sign.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you even want to go down the road for Tom on the, on the setback. I mean, setback's pretty far. Actually, setback on my road, you'd be in my, my living room. You'd be where I'm sitting if I did the fifteen setback.
But you might want, for example, to do side setbacks, just for instance.
I'll give you a quick thirty thousand foot view, if I may, just to clarify. And I don't mean to put any kind of wrenches into this whole meeting. But the fact is that at this point, when you have a personal property, as long as it's not obstructing a view, it's not causing a hazard to the public. I'm not enforcing any of your, we care about first responders. I'm not caring about political signs unless they go beyond the period of the election at hand. And even then, the political party is reached out to in order to take back their signs. Where we, we typically work within the public right of way, townlands, intersections of great congestion. You'll find people who are putting real estate signs, estate sale signs, stuff in the public right of way at major intersections, trying to attract people off of a main thoroughfare into a neighborhood. Those are not accepted. And in, and I'll be honest, I try to be politically correct about things and allow people to know that I don't work on Friday nights and I'm not out there on Saturday and Sundays. Just police yourselves, please, and keep the town nice and clean. But the fact of the matter is what I'm mainly enforcing are your cleanup, your junk people, your tree removals, your gutters. That's where I fall into an enforcement. But in the grand scheme of things, of which Mr. DiCrescenzo is talking about, is a much larger scale issue. And then the regulations need to kind of get us into the sign enforcement thing and make sure that we're all on the same page and that everyone's treated fairly and that everyone has the right, the same rights under the law. And, but at this point, just to get your mind straight about what is actually an issue in town, it's very minor. It's, it's not a major issue. It's these general contractors coming out of the left field and just trying to advertise their businesses in the public right of way on town and state lands. And that's about it. But I, I regress to the Mr. DiCrescenzo, and I don't hope I didn't muddy the waters too much, but I just wanted to give a thirty thousand foot view to let you know about, like where, where, where Simsbury is at as far as an issue with the signs. And we are open to conversations and calls mainly from people who are the estate sellers and retailers of house sales and stuff like that. And we do work with them to bring them into compliance. But as Simsbury is concerned, I just wanted to give you that kind of view. And I do apologize, Mr. DiCrescenzo, if I muddy the waters any.
No, no. Thank you very much. Bob, one of the questions, we've spent a lot of time on signs. We're not going to have any problem with political signs and some temporary signs off residential areas. But the commercial signs, you know, there are a lot of different things. And we can't discriminate on use. And yet, the properties and the uses of them are very different. You want gas stations who want to put a sign up with the prices of the gas on the end of their property on each side. And restaurants want a sign in a different way. Banks have different kinds of signs. Shopping centers want a unified, unified sign, but we want a unified sign thing. Some of the things people want are going to be really hard to codify.
Yeah, no, it, it is. It's, you know, the, the shopping centers are particularly a problem because you want a unified sign. And then Walgreens comes in and says, well, we'll take the space, but we want our own monument sign out in the front of the, of the pad site. All that is, there's plenty of examples of how to handle all of that. And then all the gas stations want to, you know, it's not like the old days when they'd go out and hang a different price, you know, mechanically, they want to just press a button and a electronic sign. And that's the, that's the way of the future. I don't know how you would get away from that. They're everywhere now. And they're not necessarily unattractive, but they could become unattractive if, if they're placing the wrong section of the site, if they're too big. But we can offer examples of all of that, because that's, that, those are issues in every corner of the country now.
That gets us from page three to page twenty.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right. That's, and you know, well, page five, because the definitions take up quite a few pages.
Can't wait to see it.
That, that's okay, as long as, again, as long as it's readable and not confusing and not, you know, hard to understand. If it's straightforward and well-written, well-written and, and long are two different things. You know, a well-written regulation may be a little bit long, but it's not inscrutable. What you don't want is a regulation that's so concise and so short that it doesn't give property owners any guidance whatsoever. And then you, you run into all kinds of problems. But I, I think a flat-out prohibition against signs in like median areas or public property, except by, in conformity with the rules and regulations established by the Board of Selectmen is, is a very, very good thing to have in your sign regulation.
Are there any, are there any examples of places where internally lit signs, which really like sign boards and video displays and so on, have been handled in a way that, that somehow rather can control them?
Well, I, I think you, you, you limit the lumens of the sign so that you don't, you can't see it from the space shuttle. I mean, you know, if it's properly lighted so that it's readable from someone passing by, but not the neighborhood behind the location. A lot of the regulations I've seen are very strict about how, how large it can be, the colors it can be. It can't be like, you know, Las Vegas sign. And it has to be of a certain maximum brightness so that it doesn't light up the night sky. You know, a really good sign doesn't necessarily mean no lights attached to it. You know, a quality sign could be something that is lit very attractively. And you can also do a special permit for some types of signs so that you can take a look at it before it gets approved.
Then you have to have standards.
You do have to have standards. Yep. And, you know, the, the, the special permit process has eroded greatly over the last ten or twelve years. Courts simply are not, not allowing commissions to be too subjective in application of, of facially subjective standards.
To follow up on Mona Melissa's question, so we talked about the setback. And then I was thinking, you know, on the front setback, maybe not, but on the sides. And I can understand, you know, if my neighbor was actually, you know, against me in an, in an, in an election, you know, I don't want him necessarily putting his sign right up on my property so people can't tell whether it's my sign or his sign. So we could do it by side, but not the front?
Yeah, I think so. When I, when I said setback, I really meant right of way. You know, because some of your setbacks from the front yard setbacks, like fifty feet, you know, and that, that's not going to be a very effective sign if you have to drive in the driveway to see it. But certainly prohibited within the town or state right of way would be an enforceable regulation.
Or we have to do something on the side, though.
Yeah, you could do it on the side so that it's no less than ten feet from the, or within the required, not within required side yard setback. But that side yard setback doesn't go all the way to the street. It just goes to where it intersects the front setback. You know what I mean? So you'd have to do it off the property line, I guess.
You get it off the property line.
You could do it off the property line. Yeah, ten feet off the property line.
Then your neighbor can run against you.
Now, if you got both your neighbors putting up signs for the other person.
I have no experience with that situation.
Okay.
I got a, I got a problem in another sign. I won't mention the name of the candidate, but they've still got signs up from the election. And the town is saying, well, you got to take those signs down. The election's over. And the person who owns the property said, oh, this election isn't over yet. It hasn't been decided yet.
I know the signs.
Reminds me, I got to go over to Wildwood.
So it's a difficult area. It's an example of how difficult it can be in here. People trying to enforce this stuff have, you know, difficulty.
Now, what about the state case? Bob, it seemed to me that these two cases were like skew lines. They weren't addressing the same thing and.
No, I don't think they are. I don't think they are. I, I think, I, I don't think either Gilbert or the state case really broke new ground. It just basically reaffirmed what the law already was. And especially in Gilbert, where, you know, towns were getting more and more restrictive with different types of signs, the court, so United States Supreme Court hates zoning cases. They just hate them because you can imagine the difficulty of writing a case decision that applies well across the entire United States. This was just, in my view, after reading it, all nine justices said, no, we've got to rein these towns in and say, you know, your regulation is, is a violation of protected speech, people's rights to express themselves. So, but we'll, we'll, when we put together the enhanced draft, we'll make sure it passes muster with both cases.
Okay, so you're, you're going to, you and, and Mike are going to put together an edited version of this draft?
Yeah, yeah, I've got some ideas and.
Sounds like an expanded version.
Yeah, expanded version. And, you know, we'll try to keep to a decent page limit. And, you know, keep the font size fairly big, too, you know.
We regulate the font size.
Yeah. So, but I won't tell you, it's an easy area. It's not. And there's no perfect regulation that everyone says, ah, that town got it right. A lot of the, a lot of towns are really struggling with all of this. And my counsel to the towns is always, you know, do the best you can. Have that purpose section right up front. And that shows that you're, you've defined and established a public purpose to it. And make it really hard for the court to, to do, to step in and overturn it because the courts do not want to substitute their judgment for yours unless they absolutely have to. It's really the basic rule. And avoid content regulation that is so obvious that the court has no choice.
Okay. Before we, Dave, let me just have a moment. Before we finish, Bob, just as a point of edification, maybe, we had, already had an application for a gas station that wanted to go to, you know, an electronic pricing device on the top of each pump. And on the basis, really, of our longstanding regulation that we don't allow internally lit signs, we rejected that application. And we haven't heard from them again, but they're spreading. I see them more and more.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, that's not going to slow down either. And some of them do it pretty well. You know, some of them do it in a way that doesn't, isn't obnoxious. But, you know, you can also eliminate, you know, spinning signs and animated signs and some of the really awful things you can definitely eliminate. But, but the electronic sign day is here. And, you know, you can prohibit it, but, you know, it's not, it's becoming the industry standard. And maybe the better approach is to prohibit the most obnoxious aspects of it.
Okay. And then we need to get that code sign and put it into the regulation.
Yeah.
Because you can't just say point blank, you can't have internally lit or you can't have something that, that creates its own display material.
You can say that under Gilbert, whether you want to say it is the issue.
Okay.
Because, you know, going back to Judge Alito's list, he specifically called out lighted versus unlighted signs as an acceptable area of regulation. You just can't say, you can have a lighted sign for commercial signs, but not for political signs or religious signs. That's the, that's Gilbert. You can prohibit lighted signs. You just can't prohibit lighted signs based on the content of the speech.
But we, we encourage not, you know, what do you call it, incident lighting on the signs rather than internally lit signs. And is that going to survive?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. As long as it's uniform, consistent, and rationally based on something that's objective. For instance, I'll go back to my Hot Meadow Street example. You could make a very strong argument that if you don't have proper lighting on the commercial signs on Hot Meadow Street or forty-four, it defeats the purpose of the sign because nobody can read them when they're going by at forty-five miles an hour. And the nature of those businesses is that the sign is intended to tell people how to get to the premises. Whereas in a residential neighborhood, you don't have that issue.
Right. Okay, questions, more questions? No, but I, I, I hear the silence and I can't resist one more comment. That, Bob, your, your reference to be able to see the, the lighting from outer space, that's a sort of a parallel to a comment I have repeated in the past, but has to do with our local Toyota dealership.
Yes.
There's a gigantic, lit internally lit sign there. And they've claimed from the get-go that, that's, that's part of the wall. That, that's part of their structure. That's not a sign.
Pardon me? We looked at that when that first went up. Is that a sign? Or is it an architectural element?
Yeah.
And you could make an argument that it's part of the sign because I, I bet you if you took a. I I bet you if you took a picture of five hundred Toyota locations, they'd all have the same wall and it's really, it acts like a sign. Uh, it's intended, it's intended to draw the public's attention to the Toyota dealership. Uh, the word Toyota is clear as day, but that lighted wall is really part of the whole.
That's right. Yeah. Well, so maybe we could be sensitive to that sort of example as the wording is finalized for this.
Well, you know, there are towns that that require you to draw a rectangle around your sign elements and limit the signage within that rectangle. So anything outside that rectangle um, uh, can't be illuminated, can't be part of the sign element. And again, that gets back to definitions. So you got to have a good definition of a sign in order to to make sure that you don't have a Toyota wall incident come up again.
Right.
We had that same issue with the Big By store, where, you know, they had a band, I don't know, it was blue, whatever goes all the way around, and whether that was, all of it is sign or just where the, you know, around the letters is the sign.
Yeah, a lot of that corporate ar- architectural design is intended you know, that you, they, every McDonald's, although this is changing, you know, the the, the building itself is a form of advertising sign.
Right. Trendy, marketing people.
Yes.
Okay, um, any more for Bob? No, thanks for your time, Bob.
Oh, pleasure, pleasure. Happy to, happy to help out and uh, you know, we're all getting used to the Zoom world here.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your commitment to help us.
Yes, well, always. Happy to do it. All right, so I'll call, I'll get in touch with Mike and we'll get working on a revised draft.
Thanks. Thank you.
You bet.
And I think uh we really have nothing else unless someone else has some new business. Uh, Melissa.
Um, David just wanted to offer a comment. So um, it's great that Bob's going to go back and do a draft. We'll all read through the revised stuff. Um, but are we going to have a workshop kind of like we did um over the regular regulations where we're just sitting around a table and and bouncing ideas off of each other?
After it finishes in twenty-three pages.
Okay.
I promise to keep it under twenty. I heard Bruce loud and clear.
Shorter is better.
Shorter is always better.
Yes, we may schedule a special meeting in January. Okay.
Okay.
I'll move that we uh adjourn the meeting at this.
Move silently.
I seconded.
Okay, motion by Bruce, second. I.
I.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thanks for coming.